We'll call the May meeting of the Area Plan Commission to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ryan Baker. Kevin Bieber. Deborah Carter. James Crisman. Terry Clark. Mark Klinkenberg. Here. John Collett. Norm Fort Proderman. Don Polk. John Hanley. Marcus Mauer. Debbie May. Amanda Thompson. William Verdine. Verdine.
We do have a quorum. Could I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I assume everyone has had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our previous meeting as well as the status report. Is there any corrections or comments on those? Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Executive -- we don't have any public comments scheduled tonight, right? Other than agenda items? Okay. Executive Director's report.
Good evening. First thing I'll start with is a handout that I printed out with purple on there. The majority of you have as a handout your packet for the month. And the reason for that is, we don't know. We took down to our mailroom, you can see on here, metered April 24th between 7:59 and 8:06 a.m., there were 17 packets that got metered. They were picked up between 11:00 and 11:30 that morning and went out into the mail, and none of them arrived. None of them. So, I don't know what happened to them. I mean, we'll try again next month if we continue to have issues. Sidney is exploring a way to do the packets entirely on the Internet or online associated with our agendas. So, if all else fails when we resort to that, we're going to keep trying it this way for now because I know this is your preference, but we may do a hybrid in the future where we have that as a backup in case this sort of thing happens again. Also, yes, I put it on the agenda, I remember to put it on the agenda this month. So, our annual reports, which have been done for a few months now, we'll ask for your approval for that this evening. I also want to let you know that there are a number of additional handouts there in front of you. We will call those out as we come to them related to the agenda items.
Sidney?
I don't have too much to say. Like Jared said, I'm kind of working on a backup plan. We'll see. I'll have to work with IT with that, of course, as with anything. It's government website, so it's a little complicated. But hopefully, we'll get something worked out.
Okay.
And I'll work for the BZAs, too.
Okay. Anyone on the Plan Commission have any questions for our director or assistant director? No, I'll entertain a motion on their reports. Those in favor? Now, I'd like to address the annual report for Jared. I hope everybody had an opportunity to look at it. It's certainly a concise compilation of what we undertook last year, and I want to applaud Jared for his foreword. If you didn't have a chance to read it, honoring our past president, it's worth the read. I thought it was very tastefully done, and I appreciated reading it. Any questions or comments on the annual report? No, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Those in favor? Motion passes. There were not any plats approved administratively this past month. Jared mentioned we do have quite a bit of other communication received, and we'll deal with those as the items come up.
They are all related to agenda items.
Oh, okay. We have one item under Old Business, it's docket number nine, file number six, 2025 Noddy Pine.
Requested to table it for one more month.
Those in favor? Motion passes. So, our first item under New Business, city rezonings, docket number 22, special ordinance number 11, 2025, 1103 South Center Street, from an R1 to an R2, two-family residential district.
We do have a handout in front of you, an email. It says 1103 South Center, and it's from Leslie England about against the rezoning to take place. And the attorney has also requested to table this petition this evening, but I believe there are neighbors that are present tonight that would like to go ahead and speak if they are able to.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you would need to motion to table first, or if you want to hear them first.
I don't know either. I think we probably ought to deal with the motion, or deal with the request of the petition approached. Do I have a motion to table? Those in favor? Okay, the request is tabled. We'd certainly be willing to listen to anybody who wants to speak to this issue from the public briefly, understanding this will come before us again, and we're taking no action tonight. If you would like to, go ahead and come up to the mic and give us your name and address and share with us your concerns.
Good evening, thank you. Vic Peerman, 1239 South Center, same block as this property. I feel this property owner appears to have no neighborhood interests besides rent revenues as evidenced by their current property and neighborhood stewardship. They've had a contractor conducting open burning of demolition materials on weekends this fall and winter when they knew code enforcement offices were closed. Open burning of the removed building materials, old painted woodwork that was probably leg containing base paints. I'm not positive, but I suspect the demolition debris burning was during the Commissioner's countywide burn ban late October and early November. This burn pile's ash residuals will remain in the backyard as a playground for the future tenants. They performed demolition of asbestos siding like by having their contractors making it friable by busting it off of the house with no regards for proper abatement or disposal. Did not care enough about their Hispanic workers to have them wearing any respiratory or outer garment for PPE during fracturing of the apparent asbestos siding. Has piles of asbestos-type siding debris still laying around the house, and some of it's been ran over by a mower and blown out in sidewalk and so forth. Has not followed published IDIM or air quality recommendations for homeowners' abatement of disposal of asbestos-containing materials. Homeowners are not exempt from Indiana Code 329 IAC 10-4-2. They may even have an old petroleum underground storage tank for heating oil on the property as evidenced by the tank fill line on the south side of the yard, sticking up out of the yard with a cap. I've seen that having fuel oil deliveries in the past, so there may be a buried underground storage tank there. I doubt if any environmental assessment's been conducted on that area because there's been no observed reconnaissance activity in the area. This condemned house had gapping roof holes for years inviting the rain and snow elements. I was told by persons who were in the structure that there was massive water damage on the first and second floors of the south rooms. Thus, it's logical that it would have likely had toxic mold damage potentially causing ongoing indoor air quality hazard problems for pending occupants like ISU students or other unbeknowning tenants. They do not maintain their trash and rubbish from the roofing and packing that is blown as far as 10 lots south onto my property, left for me to clean up from my neighborhood pride. This building in disguise has had gapping foundation holes, several have been filled in where feral appearing cats and varmints have been seen entering the current foundation hole under the back door. I saw a possum go in there this week. Has stated the owner's Highland Property Group website that the university is such a driving force in their rental market, thus one can only assume they are targeting this property for student rentals. Many students have no sense of neighborhood loyalty or pride and tryst in neighborhood as seen by other student rental properties on the very same block. The Terre Haute Vacant Property Rehabilitation Project charters involves transforming blighted properties and vacant lots into housing units with a focus on low-income and workforce housing, which is just the opposite of Highland Properties targeting the transient university population. In my humble opinion, ARPA tax dollars for the vacant property rehabilitation project granted to this corporation should not be used to convert condemned passive ISOs into worse active hazardous ISOs, especially in a historical district. My property in the same block had an unfair, in my opinion, one-year tax assessment increase of over 24 percent, only to have this corporate income property to be like lipstick on a pig that'll wear off quickly. I feel your planning group should have been involved when this corporation gets tax dollars to convert condemned property and not after they put a costume on the property with lasting neighborhood and potential health issues. I feel these owners should not be rewarded with rezoning by their intentional bypassing the zoning process by investing in conversion of the condemned structure, then retroactively requesting zoning changes, leveraging their cost of conversion of the property for tax base while their corporation reaps the ARPA tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Herb Maruks. I live at 1414 South Sixth. I don't understand why you, as a group, would even consider rezoning a home on the only block in Terre Haute that is specifically R1. And I went to the city council meeting last week, and the attorney didn't even know that he claims that the owner didn't know that it wasn't zoned R1. If he's a businessman, involved in property, there's no excuse. And there's no excuse for the city rezoning that property. He, if need be, he needs to eat the money that he wasted on that because none of the neighbors are in favor of this. And he said that they wanted to rezone it and put four off-street parking places in the backyard. That's why they demolished the garage that was there. So, it's up to you people to stop this. I'm from Terre Haute. I've seen time and time again this type of situation, and you people just bend over and let it slide. And I'll tell you right now, I think I'm the only one from the neighborhood that showed up, but there were going to be because everyone knew you were tabling the situation today. But you'll never hear the end of it because right is right. I've always done what's right, and if I knew it wasn't right, then I didn't do it. And by rezoning this, you're encouraging people to do the wrong thing.
Anyone else like to speak to this issue? If not, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Under New Business Subdivisions, Minor, Primary, Secondary, docket number 26, file number 16, 2025, Rector Place.
The property has frontage along East Dallas Drive commencing just east of the property with a common address of 11197 East Dallas Drive and continuing to the county line. Four new lots totaling 12 acres, surveyors, Mr. Bobble. The application is requesting to subdivide four new lots from the parent tract of 80 acres. Health Department still needs soil borings to be submitted for each proposed lot as public sewer is not available. Driveway permit will be required to access county road right-of-way. Stormwater plan is not needed. Public water is not available. It's not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. East Dallas Drive is considered a local-level roadway at this location. The petitioner's requested the subdivision for future homestead locations of family. Surveyor's office has requested point of beginnings to be added to each description. Roadcut permits will be needed. Health Department approval is still pending. So, we offer favorable recommendation in the following conditions, roadcut permits where needed, and Health Department approval.
Is the petitioner present? Anything that you would like to add?
Well, we already have the driver.
Okay. 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 You don't have to. If you like staff's report, you can just live with it.
Whatever's the quickest way to get.
That's the quickest way. Thank you. Are there any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission for the petitioner or for staff? Go ahead. Sure?
My other question is the watering. Do the one map that shows that there's a water drainage range across property, the map of the four plots, does it mention if that drainage is on those plots or to the south? And we don't know if that drains off the property to the west?
Well, I'd love to think that, to fence that, because we just took, he just took the 12 acres off the 80 acres on the north end of the property, and I think the drainage that happened to that is turned back on the east.
Well, and that's, okay. I mean, the question is, it looks like it's pretty close to that, so I was wondering if some of it.
Yeah, this is right on, yeah.
And that's where the stitch goes.
The short answer to that probably is in a subdivision, which is a replat of just shapes of pieces of property, is not a building permit or authority to do anything beyond having that division of property. When they go to build something, they cannot interrupt that drainage. There are regulatory agencies that they have to go through to make sure that they don't. So, if it is, in fact, servicing other areas, they have to perpetuate that somehow, and they would have to have a drainage approved by the county engineer. Sure, yeah. Doesn't really affect the size of the parcel today.
This is discussion of the size of the parcel?
That's all subdivisions are, is making a different shape out of a previous shape, yes. Any other questions from the Plan Commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this subdivision? Now, motion. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item under New Business Subdivisions, Minor, Primary, Secondary, docket number 24, file number 14, 2025, Manly One Lot.
Before I read my report, I wanted to draw your attention to the handout regarding this one titled Manly One Lot Subdivision. There is an updated plat that is attached to the email correspondence. So, the property does have frontage along West.
I would like to offer one correction. You've obviously put my address as the developer-owner, and I have no idea who this is or what this is. Maybe that was why my packet didn't get here.
Thoroughly my mistake. I apologize.
Maybe it went to Manly's.
I apologize. I will correct that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So, yes, the property does have frontage along West Gobin Place, commonly associated with 6823 West Gobin Place. It is now, we'll have to look at it. It's either two or three lots. I believe it to be three lots. Surveyor's, Mr. Meyer. The applicant is requesting to subdivide from the parent tract, removing the existing home from that parent tract, and I believe creating two new additional lots. The Health Department has approved. Public sewer is not available. Public water is not available. It's not in the flood zone. Lot exceeds the minimum lot size requirement. Gobin is considered a local-level roadway. Stormwater drainage is not required with minor subdivision. So, the first line on my comments there is, the report is subject to change pending a revised plat submittal. We have that. Is the surveyor or the representative present? Would you mind stepping up for a minute, please? I would like a little clarification. If you would please step up if you'd like for it. So, in your email, which is an attachment, I believe we now have two described lots, and a remaining portion is described by accepting out the other two areas. Is that correct?
The remainder tract to the west would be the current description except the description of the subdivision.
Okay, so.
Which is legitimate.
Sorry, please continue.
Legitimate way of describing property.
Yes. My comment was by describing the other two, the remaining is described by accepting out the other two portions, and you can legally describe a piece of property by accepting out everything around it. So, I think in doing so, you've created a description for that lot, making this a three lot, and there were no other concerns outside of that. So, perfectly satisfied with everything how it's done.
Okay.
And thank you for your assistance with this.
Do you have anything you'd like to add while you're up there on the subdivision request?
Initially, the owner wanted to create a single lot because his son and daughter-in-law are getting divorced, and he promised them that he would give them the house, property where the house is at. I subsequently got a notification from Jared that you did not like the idea of kicking the can down the road. This particular property is two miles southwest of Prairie Creek, which is about 15 miles from Terre Haute. When you drive around the area, there's very little new residential activity. So, in my mind, it made sense to create a single lot with two remainder tracks. But I understand the east property does make sense to make it a separate lot. The west property is in pasture, and that's all the owner wants to do is keep it in pasture. So, there's no need for building permit.
Sure.
And with the low density of residential activity in the area, it doesn't make a lot of sense to require an additional platted lot.
Right.
So, it would remain as an unplatted area, remainder tract.
Okay. And I think this accomplishes that. I think what Jared's concerned was is that you couldn't necessarily describe the remainder with two sections of remainder, and what you've accomplished does it for you. You shouldn't have to come back even if somebody wanted to build a house on you. You'll have replatted plots now, is what Jared's saying.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner while he's up there? Thank you. Anyone here speaking on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion. You need to say. Okay. I think you're as good off as we can get you. Got a motion to approve in a second. Those in favor? Motion passes. Next item under New Business Subdivisions, Major, Primary, Secondary, docket number 25, file number 15, 2025, Wallace Builders.
The property is encompassed by Florida Avenue on the north, 26 on the east, Delaware Avenue on the south, and 25th on the west. 2.84 acres, four lots. Surveyors, Mr. Tolles. The request is to subdivide the parent tract, creating four new lots. Health Department has approved. Sanitary sewer is available. Public water is available. It's not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. No new proposed public streets with this. A stormwater drainage will be required with a major subdivision. The plat indicates that the central alley is to be vacated. Evidence of that vacation is not presented to our office. The plat will need to document the recorded copy of the acceptance of the alley vacation and the treatment of the utilities therein. The property is owned M1 Light Industrial District. Porta zoning appeals approvals will be needed. Local utilities should be available to handle additional development at this location. So, offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with drainage and erosion control plan approval for any new construction, bonding for infrastructure if needed. Record, of course, within 90 days. Porta zoning approved appeals approvals where needed and evidence of vacation of the alley.
Mr. Shagley.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the commission. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm of rights, Shagley &amp; Lowery, and tonight I'm here on behalf of Wallace Building Contractors. This is, they're wanting to subdivide into four pieces. As far as the alley goes, as you can see by the subdivision, they've left an easement because there is telephone lines through there, and the utility companies will have access pursuant to their easements. Mr. President, I will have to say, your comment to the young lady in the back about the less you say is helpful.
It was aimed at you.
I'm kind of struggling with that comment. I backed her, trying to figure that out.
I was hoping you'd get the point.
Message received. And that's all I'm going to say.
All these years, and I finally got through.
I know, I know.
All I had to do. Any questions for Mr. Shagley?
I have one. I will, staff report mentions going to the BZA for approval. I would strongly encourage you to rezone if it's going to be residential.
It's not going to be residential.
Oh, it's not going to be?
Oh, no, 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 no. And we filed the alley vacation this morning, or this afternoon.
Looked like it was already in the, okay, so if it's a use within that, then yeah, for some reason I had it in my mind. I think I got it mixed up with the previous one.
Any other questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Anyone here wants to speak to this issue? I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget that. Next item under New Business Subdivisions, Major, Primary, Secondary, docket number 23, file number 13, 2025, Batson Replat of Lot 3.
The property has frontage commencing approximately 1,100 feet south of the intersection of West Willhold Avenue and North Sherburne Place, 15.52 acres into three new lots. Surveyor's, Mr. French. The applicant is requesting to subdivide three lots totaling 15.52 acres. The Health Department needs soil borings by a certified soil scientist as public sewer is not available. Drive permits will be required by the Highway Department to access county road right-of-way. Stormwater plan will not be required. Public water is not available. It's not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Sherburne is a local-level roadway that can sustain the additional traffic from this request in areas served with other utilities. There's an easement across Batson Sublot 2, which will be needed for access to the new lots. Of course, Health Department approval is still going to be needed. This is a major subdivision due to the number of lots created over time from existing parent tract. Given the lot size and the intended use, staff requests waiver of the major subdivision requirements in favor of the minor subdivision requirements. We do offer favorable with the following conditions being recorded within 90 days and the Health Department approval.
Is the petitioner present? Yes, sir. Anything you need to add? Nope. Took a good lesson from Mr. Shagley, didn't you? Go ahead.
I'm Tim Meadlow, and I joined that property and everything. That ground out there has been mined, so everything on the bottom, 100-some-odd feet down, is all on top. It's all clay. So, you don't need no boring stuff. It's common sense. So, what's the stipulations on septic? Plus, you never mentioned there's a big lake on that property, too. So, what's the possibility of septic contaminating the water in the future?
I believe that's why Health Department is requesting soil borings, is because of the mixed nature of the soil. They want to make sure that there is adequate percolation as well as drainage so that the lake will not be contaminated.
So, ever since there have been houses built out there, my property value hasn't gone up, but my taxes sure have, though. But where's my tax money going? It's going out on places that don't need to be done. I've got county roads out there that need to be fixed. All you guys do is go in and put Band-Aids on it. Fix them right. There ain't no sense in this. I know how it used to be years ago, they'd go in and fix the roads and everything, but now, no. You guys go in and put Band-Aids on everything, but don't fix them. Let me borrow your vehicles and everything. Let me go out there and drive on these roads and everything. Tear your vehicles up. But now, like I said, I don't agree with this here, putting more houses on the end of my property, because I deer hunt that property out there. So, when I go out there and go deer hunting, now I've got to watch where I shoot. and go deer hunting, now I've got to watch where I shoot now. Because there's going to be houses on the other end. So what's the stipulations on all that? So, no. I'm against putting houses anymore on my property or even close to my property. Because I've got a farm on the other side that's got runoff and everything off his property going into the lake. So, no. This property I got was my grandma's grandma's property. So I'm keeping it in the family. But yeah, do something about the taxes. My taxes, uh-uh. I'm done with it. This is ridiculous, paying higher taxes and everything. My property value is staying the same. So figure something out. Let me borrow you guys' vehicles over and drive. I'll be here at county revenue.
Does anybody from the Plan Commission have any questions for the petitioner? Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Now I'll entertain a motion. Sheriff.
We, we are not, we are not permitting homes. We don't do that. We're just subdividing property. And again, they, they will have to deal with any drainage issues. And for the record, we don't fix roads. We don't, we don't have anything to do with property taxes. Anything else you mentioned, we don't do any of that stuff, as everyone knows in this Plan Commission.
Did I speak? Sure.
Okay, I'm Darryl Bratt. My wife Nancy and her sister own the property directly south of this Batson replat of lot number three. My question and their questions is there enough room between the lake, which was a strip pit, actually is what it is, and the property line for a house access? And is that the only house that's going to be on that piece of property? Or are they going to want, sorry about that, are they going to want more houses as they build? Are they going to come back and ask for a variance as far as lot lines and so forth in order to have any size house between the water and the property line? And whatever they do is going to affect my wife and her sister's property and property values. May raise them, may lower them. You don't know until it happens. Personally, I can't see how they can put a house in that area and access to the house without squeezing everything in until you don't have any extra room. I don't think you can build a very big house in that area. If they want a big house on the lake, how's it going to get there? Anyway, we are not against them using their property. We just don't want them getting over too close to us. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Jared, I do believe that all the lots meet the minimum lot sizes and as far as house sizes and everything else, that's all too permitting.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business resolutions. Resolution number 18, 2025, for a new economic development area and designation of an allocation area within the city of Terre Haute, Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park.
Okay. Wanted to clarify first, this is the property north of Ohio, west of Fur Ridge, and east of Brown. We have two resolutions, an 18 and 19. Those numbers don't correspond particularly with the city's versions, which are 14 and 15. And that's because we have a separate resolution that we forward that attaches to the city resolution. So that's why we ended up with different numbers. And you'll see some differences there between the city's numbers and our numbers. Now, the rest of this, I have read it over. I do believe I understand it. But I believe Mr. Meeks here would be much better first or much more well-first on the subject matter to describe the contents of these two items.
Good evening, President Hanley and Plan Commissioners. I wanted to say that I missed you guys in April. So I was glad I got to come back. And that I got, I got to not take my stuff out of my pockets tonight. So I'm officially a Plan Commission lifer.
There is.
So I, I know that this is not my first time in front of the Plan Commission on behalf of the Redevelopment Commission, doing an allocation area and amendments to an economic development area. But I, I wanted to set the table a little bit for members of the public, who I understand are a little bit concerned about the process. So I want to be clear that the request from the Redevelopment Commission on both of these items is not related to the Plan Commission's authority under 3674, related to planning and zoning. And the request tonight is coming under 36714, which is the redevelopment statute. And it's a specific limited ask for the Plan Commission. Anytime that the Redevelopment Commission creates a new economic development area or amends one of its economic development areas, it has to pass through the Plan Commission to make sure that the economic development plan, as amended or established, conforms to the plan of development for the unit. And so it's kind of this very specific, small statutory ask. Resolution 14, which corresponds to resolution 18, was, what it does is it creates a new economic development area in the property that Jared described. And then it allocates one of the two parcels that comprise that, that area as a new commercial tax increment financing district, so your regular run-of-the-mill TIF district. And then it provides an economic development plan for the use of revenues from that TIF district, which is to build out infrastructure on, in that allocation area, serving the economic development area with the purpose of future development on that parcel. The second resolution, which is for the RDC, was resolution 15, and for this body is resolution 19, amends that economic development area created in resolution 14 to establish a second allocation area in the economic development area. That second allocation area is a residential TIF district, which is slightly different. Commercial TIFs have a 25-year life, residential TIFs have a 20-year life, but that's the primary difference. Residential TIFs also capture single-family housing assessed value, whereas commercial TIFs do not. So the request tonight is for your review of the economic development plan, which is to capture the tax increment from those two parcels and then building infrastructure on this parcel for future development. So happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I understand that I'm probably going to be the beginning of a fun party this evening, so.
Any questions for the President from the Plan Commission?
Absolutely.
What's the value, what do you capture there?
So, so, right now, it has kind of a limited value, because it's undeveloped vacant agriculture land. In the event that development occurs on that parcel, the assessed value as of January 1st, 2025 will be what we call the base assessed value. And then when the property is assessed in 2026 and 2027, if the value of that property goes up, the incremental increased value, right? So you take out the base, and that keeps going elsewhere. The value above that, instead of going elsewhere to the sort of other taxing units, it goes into an allocation fund. And not all of it, it's more complicated than that. But, but, yeah, yeah. So that's, in the event that there is future development on this parcel, you would have revenue. And the city's plan would be to do a financing that would allow that revenue to pay off the costs of the infrastructure development on the site. So basically allows the site to self-fund its own infrastructure so that it can go from vacant land to developed land.
So maybe, are you guys anticipating what you're going to have there?
So there is, the city does have a plan, and it's a single-family housing subdivision, and then an apartment complex facility. And that lines up with your residential TIF area, and then the commercial TIF area. Yep.
I have some of the impression that there's something buried underground that's going to be developed on that property that the developers want to build it. Is there any issue with this property?
I apologize, Ms. Carter. I don't, I do not know that one. And that's, I always joke that I'm not, I come to Plan Commission, but I'm not the planning guy. And so I apologize. I'm happy to ask the question to the Developers Council and get back to you if that's helpful. And just a note that there is the planning, oh goodness me, there is the planning and zoning process. And it is my understanding that this is coming back through the planning and zoning process. So this will not be the first time that you hear about these parcels here. It's just not, we're not doing planning and zoning tonight. So I apologize, I wasn't, I did, I don't, I don't know about the underground state of the property.
Yeah.
Now, these resolutions, these are specific to this proposed development, right? So if, so if this development doesn't happen, and another developer comes in, we would need to do this all over again?
Well, if, if the allocation areas exist, and then, and the sort of the project that is contemplated doesn't happen, and the city didn't, you know, we get through the process, the allocation areas exist, and nothing else changes, if in the event the, another developer came in and developed the site, the value, the increment would still be collected, and it would go into an allocation fund. And the Redevelopment Commission could, could use that revenue in or serving this economic development area. So even, even if the, this, you know, the Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park projects didn't proceed, that, that value might still be there and could be used for improvements that would serve this spot. Another option would be redevelopment could basically just go through the process again and, and eliminate the economic development area and the allocation area. Those are both, those are both options. But if you do, if you kind of, if you do nothing, the TIF still gets collected. It's just, we wouldn't, you know, you'd have to decide what you were going to do with it if we didn't do the financing.
And the benefit to establishing that base at, you know, January 1, 2025, is the assumption that the value in 2027 is going to go up?
Well, yeah, exactly. That's correct.
Now, I know there's some state funding involved in this, or low-interest loan, I guess. Does there need to be a TIF or residential TIF in order to get those funds?
So that is the agreement with the Indiana Finance Authority, is that sort of the city is a partner in the, in the, in the project, and that opens up access to the RIF loan program. So the city is sort of, is the recipient of the, of the award. The city is, is in a great position here, because these are what we, with the financing, when we get to that sort of part of the process, will, will be what's called developer-purchased. So the developer will have a guarantee that backs up the bonds, and the city will have no sort of obligation beyond setting aside the tax increment as it comes in. But yeah, that's the, so the IFA awards the city the financing, and so the city does have to be a partner in the project.
Okay. And so that's part of what this resolution does, is it fills, fulfills the expectation from the state so that they feel comfortable allocating the funds?
Right. Having, yeah, exactly. That that stream of revenue exists in addition to the developer guarantee.
And same question, if a different development plan comes forward, is, are we going to have to renegotiate with the state, or will we still get the money?
Well, the, and this is kind of digging into the internal politics at the IFA. They're, what we hear from them is that they really feel a ton of sort of time pressure to get this loan program out the door. It's, it's a new program for the state, and so the people that run it really want to be able to go back to the General Assembly and say, look how much money we moved. And so if we weren't able, if the city was not able to move this financing through, you know, to develop this parcel, it's unclear that, that the money would, would be there in the future. And what we've, what we've seen, actually, and this project has been a little bit of a benefit beneficiary of it, is that other communities that have not been able to get across the finish line have left their money on the table. And, and that, that has allowed Terre Haute to actually increase the amount of the loan funds that are available to it. So there's, there are other communities that have kind of, have not been able to get it done, and have lost out on it. So it is, it is an opportunity, you know, to lose access to this funding for the, for the city. Or I guess that's a risk.
And the other issue, I guess, as of July 1, some of the TIF laws are changing, and that, again, that kind of pushes the timeline up on this?
The, well, so the TIF, TIF neutralization will, will be what it's going to be, whether we, whether we get this done now, or, you know, like, it's going to impact the revenue stream. But the IFA kind of is aware that that revenue stream exists. What it really does, what that really does, is it, the developers guarantee, right, that risk is a little higher because the TIF revenue stream may be smaller. But the city's municipal advisor has, has run the numbers, and even after adjusting for, for the changes to the law over the, you know, the next handful of years, they're not worried about the viability of the financing.
Okay.
So, and I guess I, if I can add one more point, Amanda, the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thompson, forgive me.
Hi.
I talked one time at city council, and I think we're, I think we're best friends. So the, the city wouldn't necessarily have to be involved in another development, right? That might, that might come through. So I get to the point about would we have to renegotiate it if, if this didn't happen, it's, you know, and some other developer came in, the city may have sort of no leverage over that project or no involvement at all, which is also a possibility.
And I guess the other clarifying question I should ask, so this is kind of like, step one is creating this, and then you would still have to come in front of us to ask to actually rezone those properties, because that property right now is zoned solely R1. So you would still have to come back before us to request the R2 as well as, and the subdivision?
So yeah, this is, this is 36, only 36714 tonight, and planning and zoning under 3674 at a later, at a later meeting, with a different attorney than me, because not, not a planning and zoning attorney.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're, they are separate, separate processes. And the financing, separate process as well. So that'll come through, not through this body, but through other, other public bodies. Yeah. Absolutely. So the, the two areas last two different lengths of time. The commercial TIF for 25 years, and the residential TIF for 20 years. And that's, they're just authorized under different parts of the statute. No worries.
I have one. I think I heard the answer somewhere in there, but I just want to be a little more blunt. As far as tonight, the TIF district is the vote. If we have not voted yet on any subdivision or rezoning, this, this doesn't lock us into any specific development that's not been voted on yet?
No, not at all. Not at all. And really, really, the only thing that is approved from the Plan Commission's standpoint tonight is that the Redevelopment Commission would be allowed to collect tax increment in the event that in the future there was tax increment. And the Redevelopment Commission would be authorized, if there was tax increment, to build infrastructure towards future development on this parcel, but sort of not any specific, you know, not for a specific project. So it's also, I guess, possible that if, you know, in the future, there was increment, and not this project, but some other project, the Redevelopment Commission might have increment to be helpful elsewhere, which, you know, could give the city again and in to another project. But yeah.
Sure.
So if this is denied, then the city wouldn't be able to increase the tax rate?
So there's, so it's not, it's not an increase. It doesn't change the taxes at all, right? Everybody pays their normal taxes. It's just where the taxes go. So ordinarily, there's, you know, a whole collection of taxing units that share in the property taxes. And under this statute, what happens is, is the city is allowed through its Redevelopment Commission to, to identify particular parcels and have the tax revenue go to the Redevelopment Commission. And so the Redevelopment Commission gets the property taxes that get paid. So it doesn't change the property taxes, just where they end up for a So it doesn't change the property taxes, just where they end up for a brief sort of period of time.
Any other questions from anyone on the plan commission? Anyone here like to speak to this issue?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Barr, and I live in Edgewood Grove. First of all, I'd like to recognize Jared Baylor. I'm assuming that's you. It's so nice when you send in an email, and incidentally, I think you forwarded my email and the petition to all the members.
I hadn't gotten to that portion yet. That is one of the handouts they have placed before them? Yes, this evening.
Okay. Well, we got an, I got an email back from Jared saying that he distributed it to you guys and, and how, how things were going to proceed. And being somebody that, you know, sends in something, it's nice to know, you know, it's been received and that people are, you know, what's going to happen. I also like to recognize Marcus and the mayor. They've been very kind in their time and met with us last week and very patient with our questions and answered a lot of questions. So appreciate that. And sitting here, I, I've come to the realization in watching you guys, that I'm glad you guys do what you do, and I'm glad I don't. So, anyway, anyway, I have a question, and it was in the email that, that I sent. In the resolution, it says, in, I'm just wondering if you guys have a description of the paddock at the park? In the resolution, it refers to a paddock at the park, which of course is the apartments. But I, I looked online, and I didn't see any description of what the paddock in the park is. Do you guys have any documentation or anything like that that explains what that is? Okay. Well, my question is, I don't understand how you can approve this, these resolutions referencing paddock in the park, and there's no description of what you're voting on. I mean, you're voting on an entity that doesn't exist until it gets zoned, so. I used to be, for 21 years, Director of Purchasing at ISU, and I signed all the contracts for goods and services, and I certainly wouldn't sign a contract, you know, that references something that's not defined, you know? And so that's one question I have.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Yes, if you would, please.
That's, that's just simply the name of the TIF district. It could be the sheepdog.
Okay.
And we might not have a picture of a sheepdog, but it is just simply the name of it. It has nothing to do with any developments.
Thank you for answering that. I, I heard the attorney say that, that if you guys approve this tonight, it wouldn't hold us to, you know, having a zone. And that was another concern that I had, that later on, somebody would say, well, it's already been approved, you know, and.
Yeah, the only thing we were asked to establish tonight is the, is the economic development zone for redevelopment.
Well, thank, thank you for answering that. The petition, which you guys maybe haven't seen yet, it's been out online on the internet for about five days, and currently, the numbers increased since the copy of the petition. We're now up to over 451 people who've signed this petition. And it sounds like you guys haven't had a chance to see that yet or read it. So I'll just mention some of the points that are made, and then a lot of other people want to make similar points, I think. Everybody recognizes Ohio Boulevard to jewel to the community. I don't think anybody would argue with that. We think a lot of, we've heard that the city, whenever they want to attract businesses or people to the city, a lot of times they'll take them down to Ohio Boulevard on a tour as, as a part, you know, to attract them. And so we think it's important to keep Ohio Boulevard along the same line as what it is currently today. So we're strongly, the petition, which is signed by 451 people so far, strongly opposes the development of apartments. Another concern to density, we would like to see lots at a minimum comparable to Edgewood Grove. We'd like to see plenty of green space and grass and trees. The houses along Ohio Boulevard, we would, in its development, perhaps the developer could make the houses along Ohio Boulevard more along the lines of the houses that are already along Ohio Boulevard. And we'd like to see some distinctive designs, as is in Ohio Boulevard and in Edgewood Grove. So we're not opposed to having nice houses, but with less density and more green space. Ohio Boulevard and Demming Park are historical districts and a community asset. Then the petition goes on to say that overpopulation will exacerbate, and I know we've got a traffic study going on, cities got it going on, overpopulation will exacerbate the already traffic problems. My wife's already gotten hit once pulling that Edgewood Grove on Brown because the traffic is so bad. So anyway, the area serves as a significant recreational area. There's a lot of walking and riding bikes, running. The home values will decline with current proposed density and increased traffic, not to mention the apartments. Boils down to the fundamental question of what, what's important to the community and to the neighborhood. Development needs, development needs to mirror the surrounding area, which means homeownership, distinct design, and houses that seem to reflect the rest of the area around there. Renters simply don't demonstrate the same behavior in caring for property as is demonstrated by homeowners. And finally, we'd like not to have the area zoned for apartments. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue, remembering that we are not rezoning property, nor are we subdividing property tonight? We are creating an economic development enterprise zone, which simply allows them to collect any increases in property values and use them for infrastructure in that area. That's what we're addressing. Got one coming up first.
This gentleman had a handout that I gave to you right before the meeting started. That's, that's the handout I gave.
I apologize for the handout, because we were, and almost everybody here was under the impression that you were zoning and laying out the plans and approving this development as it was laid out and published. So.
Yeah, we have not seen anything.
Most of what I had to say in my handout was regarding that. But I do have a question, and that's with regard to the financing and so forth. Are you telling me that the only way this is going to get developed is by the city putting up bond money and helping pay for it? That seems to me what you're doing, or what, what they're requesting, is that the city participate in raising the money through the redevelopment office. The result of that is that the city's not going to get any of the property taxes. The redevelopment division will get it, and they will spend it the way they wish. So that's.
Do you want to answer that?
I, I, yeah. It's set up as a loan to the state. Got it, okay. Right. I understand that. Okay. All right. I would, then I would give you a warning. Towne Sealy Bill was promised money to repair and add filtering systems to their water systems, and the head of the domestic water supply for IDEM was in my house and made that promise and showed us documents that the funding had already been approved by the state, and they haven't received a penny yet, and it's been almost a year. Not one penny. Well, I don't know. I'm just saying, I'm not, I don't think it's all that easy to rely on state money an awful lot of the time. Things get delayed much further than they should be. I'll leave it at that. I would appreciate you keeping the handout and taking a look at it for down the road when we get to that point.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else need to speak to the economic development issue?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ross Poland. I live at 3100 Ohio Boulevard. Thanks to everybody who spoke before me, I don't really want to add too much to that as I share some of the concerns that have already been brought up. I just want to ask a clarifying question. We've already covered that this is not, doesn't have anything to do with rezoning this evening. My, my question is about the timeline for when that might occur and what you would need to see before you take a vote on that or make that decision.
We would have no idea unless staff already knows there's something. We don't find out until about a week before. They have to, any applications that come before this body have to be submitted one month prior to that. So nobody here has seen any plans or anything, but.
I'm not implying that you have. I'm just wondering how that process works. So you would receive an application for?
A developer, yeah, this is simply between redevelopment, which is a, which is a division of the city, and us, the redevelopment will not come back, as Mr. Meek said, he won't be involved in that, but the developer will come, and he will request either replating, rezoning, or both.
All right.
And until we see that by application, we, we don't know.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, I could probably give a little bit more insight into that. The developer has been reaching out to the members of City Council, and some of us are meeting with them next week. So I don't think we're looking at several months down the road for them to submit. I think it would probably be pretty soon.
I can, I can maybe add a little bit more too, sorry. From the engineering side, we make a lot of recommendations based on the subdivision plat or the rezoning to this board, our department does. And we're going to look at the infrastructure, we're going to look at the traffic, we're going to look at minimum lot sizes and what the area can support. I'll also add that our, our office has already begun doing a traffic study. You may see a couple counters out at Brown and Fruit Ridge. They should be gone now because they're going to be moving to Ohio. And we're going to be looking at existing traffic patterns, existing issues, and then we're going to be making a trip generation model for the proposed development and throw in the P-Cars to see what kind of other issues arise. But infrastructure's pretty important, as that's what we make a lot of recommendations on. Is there anything else you want to add, Jared? I mean, I think you'll see, I think you'll see two different submittals. It looks like you'll see a rezoning and you'll see a subdivision. The rezoning has to go to?
Oh, they're going to be heard next month.
So we will hear them next month, staff is saying. We will hear it next month. Staff said they were submitted today, subdivision and rezoning.
The subdivision comes before this group? The rezoning would come before this group for recommendation to City Council?
To City Council, right.
And City Council makes the ultimate decision.
I'm Robbie White III. You've all probably have heard me last week during that meeting. I don't know if all of you all were there, so I'm going to introduce myself again. And I, first of all, want to say, to this man's point back here, that we're more than just a little concerned. So with being more than just a little concerned, I just want to say, I, I came here back in 2022, and it's, it was amazing community. It's still an amazing community. And I understand that each and every one of you all's jobs is not easy. No matter what you do, someone will always not like it. No matter what you do, that, there'll always be a naysayer. So I appreciate you putting up with this situation that's unfortunately been brought to us. I understand that some of you all tonight have already made a decision in your mind. Some of you all have been giving prompts or questions, per se, that you all, you aren't even listening to the other side. Also, I don't understand how there's a glitch where you can say it's been all passed out like this, the petition, when clearly not hardly any of you all have seen it. To me, it seems like you don't want it to be seen. To me, it sounds like you're trying to suppress our voices being heard, and I don't appreciate that very much. I understand that you're trying to get something done in which you think it's in our best interests. But what it sounds like is something that you can't guarantee, something that's a slippery slope, something that, something that you're brought in to say a sales pitch just to get a paycheck when you have no stake in it yourself. I also want to say that how can you represent a community without looking at those impacted? You're going to make a decision on something, and I'll say it again, based off of a sales pitch to get a paycheck. So.
If I could interrupt you for a second, please don't pick the microphone up anymore.
Oh, sorry.
And address this body, not anybody in the audience.
My, my apologies there. And I will say, again, my apologies on that. Now, as to why this is very, very troublesome to me, so when I first moved here back in 2022, let me go back to that. I can, I can remember one of my first memories around Ohio Boulevard near Demming Park, that the strip of very beautiful scenery around with the trees, that in the middle of the two roadways going on either side, going either towards Demming Park or away from Demming Park. There's senior photos of the local high schools being taken, and I can just remember the look on their face, just, just peacefulness and excitement. And to take away a space that, you know, really impacts and is cherished by more than just the people that live around there. It's not just the people who, you know, it is like, I would hope it'd be considered the opinions of those living in the area directly affected, but also, it's not just, it's not just those living around. It's about the community and the stuff that also goes in. And I don't think many people would want senior photos in an area with a bunch of jam-packed apartments and housing that does not reflect the area that already is there, that does not respect, well, it also doesn't respect the historical heritage that it also has. If you're going to put something there, make it meaningful, make it, and I'm not saying that a bunch of opportunities of housing is not meaningful, I'm just saying it comes with a price. It comes with a price that those, those in the community are going to have to, have to pay, not just monetarily from this sort of a loan in tax dollars, not just that, but also just emotionally, and also just the environment that one comes back to or has their leisure time in. I brought up the area of that snowy area by the hill when it's winter time, and all the little kids that go sledding around there, all these little kids, the future of Terre Haute. And I just, I remember many times driving to and from campus because I recently transferred to Indiana State University for finance. Previously was computer engineering, which is totally different field. But getting back to the point, there, there is a lot of roadkill by the already many cars that travel down that area. And I want to say, putting in, you know, several hundred more cars in that area, not only is going to impact traffic and stuff like that, it's going to put a safety issue at hand. It's going to put the safety issue of how do you protect, you know, several dozen little ones, especially in families that have multiple kids, when, when you're having constant cars, all different ages, and all trying to get there on a deadline, right? If you, a lot of the nature of Ohio Boulevard as it is, it's more spaced out. What's there works. It looks very beautiful, but it also has that historical meaningfulness, and that will be taken away if you continue with how this current project is going. It doesn't seem like it's an opportunity to me. doesn't seem like it's an opportunity to me. It's an uncertain future with promises that maybe properties, properties rise, that's the hope. But in reality, how can you say that when the quality just isn't there, the safety features not figured out and imposes direct human life risks? And I don't know about you all, but that would be very, very saddening to see. Because I know the community, the Terre Haute that I know, and the Terre Haute that I've been in since 2022, would definitely not, is definitely, doesn't look like this kind of scary projection that's being discussed. And I'd really appreciate it if you can consider the voices in these petitions. Consider the parents, the teachers, the civilians, all that live in this area, all of Terre Haute that, you know, and that's not even going into the hundreds of runners every single day that go past that area. I don't know if you all spend some time around after school at this time, because I know everyone, everyone has some care about the future, even if there's a threat plan. I urge you all to look in the humanness side, humanness side part of things and think about where, what are we going to do? Also, take away from the, like, different school districts, track teams, they come by on a near daily basis during the school year and run around that Ohio Boulevard, Demming Park area and stuff. That makes that so much more dangerous and even puts a roadblock into years and years of practice and hard work that I'm sure as a community, we've got to be very proud of because that's day in and day out work right there. As a former athlete with soccer, goalkeeping in specific, I can definitely appreciate that hard work and dedication. And being able to have a nice space to do it, I mean, if I were a runner, I'd love that. And to imagine, like, that'd be the same as taking away a turf soccer field from, you know, a community, or a nice park space with a nice grassy field with a community. You're taking away their play space. You're taking away that, some of that drive, that, just that mental mentality from the community. So, if you don't want to do it for the people that live there, okay, but do it for the city of Terre Haute in which you all represent, I really urge you to look down in your hearts and be like, am I doing this because I was told to do this? Or am I doing this because I believe in it? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would redevelopment council like to refocus us on the request for the evening?
Happy to, President Hanley and Commissioners. So, the first resolution, Resolution 18, which is tied to Redevelopment Commission, Resolution 14, 2025, approves the creation of a new economic development area, the Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park Economic Development Area, and a commercial TIF allocation area within that economic development area known as the Paddock at the Park Allocation Area. I like sheepdog, though. I was telling Jordan I'm going to call my next allocation area, Steve. And then, the second resolution, which is 19, 2025, which relates to 15, 2025, from the Redevelopment Commission, establishes a residential housing allocation area known as the Brickyard Estates Allocation Area, also within that Brickyard Estates, Paddock at the Park Economic Development Area.
Any questions from the Plan Commission about what's before us tonight? Not only entertain emotion. If this, if this has something to do with the resolution on the economic development area, we're happy to hear it. If it's about some development or traffic studies, that's not on the agenda tonight.
Why is this a redevelopment area? It's already capable of having, it's on R1. People could build houses on it.
That's not the purpose of what's before us tonight. It's, the Redevelopment Commission is asking for an economic development area so they can recapture any increases in property value and use it for infrastructure in that area. That's what's before us tonight.
So, just to clarify, if you're asking for economic development, you're being specific, specific to those two entities that you've named. It's already a development area. So, why are you being specific to those two entities? Why wouldn't you just open it up and say, this is a development area?
That's what they're doing.
But you're naming specific-
I didn't name anything.
Well, it's named in the resolution.
That's, there are, there are TIF districts all over the county that, that nobody is aware of. There's, there's, Casino's got one. There's, at the South Industrial Park, I mean, if you want to speak to it, you certainly can. But I think we're getting back into the weeds about the development, which is not before us tonight, but will be next month. That's, that's, we are not addressing any development on the property whatsoever tonight. We're not even being asked to. Go ahead. Sure.
So, Commissioners, to answer the questions, the reason for the economic development area, we call this the But For test, is that this parcel has remained vacant in spite of significant sort of development around it. And that is why it, you know, it is developable. But the problem is that thus far, the cost of infrastructure development on that site has, has prohibited any developer from choosing to develop it. And the state has provided this opportunity for the city to remove that obstacle to development by, by doing the infrastructure work or getting the infrastructure work done. And that will move it from, from land that is, is developable in theory, but for sort of the cost of the infrastructure to developable in fact. And that, and that's the difference. That's why the economic development area. It's not that you couldn't build on it now.
It would be much more developable if it were serviced by sanitary sewers and automated extensions and fire hydrants and roadways and that.
Correct, exactly.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to speak to the But For argument, just so you know, so this is relevant to the TIF stuff. And I apologize. My name is Vinnie Isaiah. President Hanley, Plan Commissioners, to start off with a borrowed joke, longtime listener, first time caller, so I appreciate it. The But For argument, there have been stabs at developing that same green space in the past, and what stopped them in the past was the rezoning. Had the rezoning gone through and City Council had said, hey, we think this is a good idea, there would already be stuff out there. The TIF is not necessary to put things on that land. That's the bottom line. Because it's been tried before, before the TIF, and in fact, the barracks, sorry, parkland got through without doing a TIF. So, if they can do that there, which is only a block away from where we are, and they can take stabs at the green space in the prior, at prior times, then there's no reason that they need to do the TIF now. Does the TIF maximize their profits? Sure, but I don't think that's what the point of the TIF is supposed to be. It's supposed to be because there is no other alternative. That's how TIFs started in California. There was no other alternative. You used it as a last resort. It's kind of like a grenade. It shakes things up, but you don't know what's going to happen after that. Plus, you're on the hook for 20 to 25 years. By the way, this is the first time we're hearing about two TIFs. I learned about TIFs last Friday, 120 hours ago. Take away my sleep time and the fact that I have to grade finals, I've been studying TIFs since then. I still don't know everything, and I'm a little leery to be up here because I'm probably going to misspeak and say some things that are not quite right, but I feel something needs to be said out loud. Taxes will change, that's the whole point. They see lower property taxes in that green space. Think back to why California did this. They had urban blight. They wanted business parks to come in. The business parks increased the value and they got all of these extra taxes. But the people in the parks didn't see the other taxing entities, so they got a tax break. What they were hoping for is some of that tax break would then spill back into the community, or the businesses would, businesses would grow fast enough and be like, oh, hey, we took over. Is this housing program going to do that? Is it going to act like a business park? Again, you're on the hook for 20 to 25 years if you say this is okay. And another thing that I've noticed is that once the door is open to the TIF, they can essentially do whatever they want along the way. The amendments are no big deal. We're not going to sit here and have these discussions. It's just going to be paperwork and onward it moves. So, it's a very important decision, although I realize you guys are the first layer and really tomorrow's the most important one. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that better?
Way better. That's fine. That's fine.
I'm not used to speaking in front of a lot of people, typically just my 31 third graders. So, you're, my population in front of me is a little bit older, but I do have a question regarding, so if this were to go in, my understanding is that this is the first time Terre Haute has ever considered a residential TIF. You had stated that, in fact, oh, we have them all over, but I'm pretty sure that is- So- We are. We are definitely going to be the experiment. If you approve this, you have to realize, we're the guinea pig. We've never done this before. We've done it commercially. But you are taking this historical piece of property and going to change it forever. I'm going to mention the schools- to attach to this. So, we live in Edgewood Grove. We felt the ramifications of the closure of Meadows. If this land truly, if the people behind it wanted this to be, be developed, why did they not put money into the local school that the children would be funneled into? Okay? So, I realize that's not part of the TIF decision, but you had mentioned, and this is the only reason I'm bringing it in, Mr. Moyer, you had mentioned you were doing the traffic and how it would affect the area. So, that being said, there are no local schools there for the children to walk to. The closest building after Meadows' closure would be Devaney. There are, the infrastructure is not there, and that is outside of the TIF. So, the city of Terre Haute would then have to start considering, how do we put in sidewalks, the infrastructure I'm referencing, to afford these children to walk to their home school? All schools, think about it, have a district where children can walk to. So, now the city of Terre Haute will be taxed with the infrastructure additionally heading down Brown South and to at least Devaney. If not, they're going to be bussed out to Lost Creek, which currently sits at 768 students after the Meadows' closure and is rated a D building. So, if we're going to put new housing, think of this from the city standpoint, gathering your taxes, et cetera, we're going to market these $450 homes? Four hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, rather. Who in Terre Haute is coming in to buy these with an apartment complex next to it? Seriously, think about that with minimal land and the only way to increase your property value, once you purchase it, that's the value of your home, unless you do additions. Where are you going to put additions on these little tiny plots of land? So, that, to increase the property value of these homes going on the TIF that could potentially go in is minimal. We're going to keep growing up. So, in any event, is this the only option for the TIF in Terre Haute for the first residential experiment? That's the question I'm asking you. Are there other places in Terre Haute this TIF could go in that would adequately support the needs of this community? That area cannot support the needs of the school district. I will attest to that. Wilson's full, Devaney was 50 below capacity when they closed Meadows. So, this area is critical when you're thinking about that decision this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone on the Plan Commission? I can need to move on with the agenda items tonight and not get into the weeds any further on what may happen next month. We'll deal with that next month.
Sure. It's my understanding that, and I think Council explained this, the funding that we're getting from the state, the only way we get that funding from the state is if we guarantee it through a TIF and a residential TIF. That, that's exactly what the Council, what the attorney, did you have information that he's lying to us? It's, it's not mandatory by statute, but it's what's been negotiated with the state entity. The state entity has been told, has told us that we cannot get the money from the state unless we guarantee it through a TIF and a residential TIF, right?
If only in this plot of land. That's my question.
Can you answer that? Was this negotiated with the state with this property in mind?
I think the state's objective is additional housing, really, for the program. It's called the Residential Infrastructure Fund, RIF. So, I guess I don't, I don't imagine that the state is particularly interested in where in Terre Haute that housing goes, as long as there's new housing in Terre Haute. That being said, there's, there's not another, another parcel with, with a development proposal that, you know, this proposal was the application that was made to the state. So, it's unlikely the state would hold these funds for some nebulous possible other location.
And if I'm right, it was redevelopment that chose this parcel of land for the proposal to the state?
Well, I guess the, the parcel approached redevelopment and-
The parcel owner approached redevelopment.
And redevelopment brought the, brought the state in because the redevelopment is the sort of entity the state will work with.
And you might not be able to answer this, but was redevelopment approached by any other entity about areas in Terre Haute for this project, for the special funding from the state?
I don't know the answer to that, but I, I know almost all of the stuff that redevelopment's doing, and there's nothing, nothing else of this nature. So.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir. If you'd like to.
Hello, my name's Vince Little. I'm a local surveyor here. And kind of became aware of this just not too long ago. And it was interesting as to a resolution for these kinds of things. And I understand that the Redevelopment Commission and, is it Mr. Meeks? Meets? Okay. His firm was an integral part of developing the Redevelopment Association of Indiana's handbook as a guideline for the redevelopment commissions. And it said, Ice Miller, Baker &amp; Daniels, and Barnes &amp; Thornburg were partners in creating this model ordinance for redevelopments. And in this, started looking at this a little bit and read some. And Part One of the procedural guidelines, and I'll just read it straight out of the handbook, says it is important to understand that redevelopment and economic development powers are extraordinary tools to promote redevelopment and economic development within a community, and that the use of these tools should be used when either the community's regulatory processes or the ordinary operations of private enterprise will not be sufficient to address the conditions required, requiring redevelopment or economic development of this property. And meaning, there's some powers that are implied that the Redevelopment Commission has that would be put in place when the local regulations are insufficient to be, have this property developed. I would say an instance of that is similar to the flooding regulations where there are- are special circumstances that, um, invoke adjustments from the regulatory things. Let's say you have an Indiana Theater. It's a historical item. If it's in flood zone, if it's where it's at right now, and it couldn't match our zonings, it couldn't match our subdivision setbacks and things like that. When those things fail, it's reading here that, uh, redevelopment, uh, you make that EDA, Economic Development Area, and then they have special powers, sounded pretty powerful, that they can continue with the development of this. And if it was not for that special powers, the current systems with zonings, subdivisions, things like that, um, the property would stay undeveloped or it would run down in case of, like Indiana Theater. And also in, um, designating an economic development area, is this a declaratory resolutions?
Well, the Resilience 14 and 15 are Resident 18, right? Thank you.
Okay. So these are related to Indiana Code 36-7-14, all of them? Or is any of them under 36-7-25-1? 14? Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and read. It says to declare the, that the plan for an economic development area cannot be achieved by regulatory processes or the ordinary operation of private enterprise without resort to redevelopment powers. And then it also goes on to say that state in the declaratory, um, resolution, that a public purpose is being served by the involvement of the redevelopment commission such that the area in question is in need of redevelopment or formerly a blighted area or is underdeveloped and/or has barriers to future development in the case of an economic development area to the extent that cannot be corrected by regulatory processes. So I read a lot of legal documents, um, stuff like that. And what I'm really concerned about is that, and I think it's kind of been alluded to a little bit, that we need, if this, you know, gets approved, before it gets approved, we need to, uh, understand, I'll say, or have some sort of a confirmation that our zoning and our subdivision provisions will be required if this resolution is approved, that the res, approval of the resolutions do not negate having to have subdivision and zoning approvals by you guys. Um, so in, in that regard, um, today, they did file at the city clerk's office, May 7, 2025, a, um, request to rezone part of the property, the eastern part, to a, um... Your petitioner would request that the real estate described herein shall be zoned as R3 multifamily. Your petitioner would allege that R3 multifamily zoning classification would not alter the general characteristics of this neighborhood. That's, that's, will be coming up in the petition for rezoning, and that's, that I assume will be next month's, um, situation. Now, in my mind, there's two ways this could go. One, it could, as we would all hope, including myself, not just you guys, uh, that it does have to go through the rezoning process. And people can have their say, that's part of the community, to say, a lot of that's the human factor of things like that. And that it would have to meet require, uh, subdivision requirements and then any variances or, uh, BCA things. It would go through our process of developing. A little gun shy that the wording in the handbook, that if we've taken this model handbook and applied it to our rezoning, uh, department here in Vigo County, of which I do not know if that's the case or not, but Barnes and whoever it is, the attorneys are the ones who wrote this, and I see it as a quasi way to get around zoning and subdivision, that these special powers are there when those things cannot be invoked or are lacking in the ability to develop the property. Go along with that. Um, now, they're gonna request that part of this be R3, uh, which would be a highly spotted type of a request due to the nature and the dynamics of the R1 zone around this piece of property. Uh, the same owner owns 80 acres, um, 3,000 feet away, uh, which is R3 right across the road, 50 feet. So they're not asking for a rezoning of that right next to an existing R3. They're asking for, you know, they will be asking for, uh, a rezoning of this in the middle, yeah, of an R1. So, I mean, I know this is a little bit out of the box, but so be it. I would like for Mr. Meeks, if he could, and I'll throw this out there and you guys can decide if you, you know, wanna do that or not, that he answer, um, a question that we've come up with. It says, if these resolutions are approved, does the proposed development still have to comply with all the existing development regulations as prescribed by Vigo County Area Planning and Board of Zoning Appeals? If he can answer a yes to that, it's open.
I think everybody sitting up there can answer yes. It's not even ever been alluded to that it would somehow circumvent the process. In fact, we've said over and over and over again that it doesn't circumvent the process. Mr. Meeks can certainly address it, but there's no question anybody up here is mine that it...
Okay. Could he answer that question?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would you like me to read that again or not?
No, I got you.
Okay, okay.
Just for the, to Commissioners, President Hanley, um, the redevelopment commission establishing an economic development area and these allocation areas, if you approve these resolutions this evening, in no way impacts the zoning or planning authority that this body has over these parcels. They're under completely separate statutes, completely separate processes. And the special powers of the redevelopment commission that were referred to are the ability to set up TIF allocation areas and direct property taxes to do local public improvements and some ability to acquire property with, um, fewer appraisals, um, usually if there's a blighted property. Those powers do not in any way extend to interfering with the zoning and planning or with in any way, um, your, your land use function. So completely separate statute, and this does not give the redevelopment commission any authority to direct the, the rules that govern the land use of these parcels. It, it just allows the collection of revenues for the development of infrastructure.
Thank you. Okay, Plan Commission, any other questions? If not, I think we need to entertain a motion on these two resolutions. You have something? Go ahead.
Just real quickly, do, wanna make you aware that there is an additional letter of remonstrance that you received this evening titled Concerns About Brickyard Paddock Development.
Which are not on the agenda.
Wherein the author was confused on procedurally how things are handled and then the third whereas as being stated in a past tense, or the two items stated.
Okay. We got it. All right. Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Got a motion to approve?
Is that both of them?
Both, both resolutions.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.